That brings us to item six, information items. Item A, Bond Planning Task Force Update. Welcome to those members of the Bond Planning Task Force that are joining us this evening. And we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Welcome, President Van Hook, members of the board, and Dr. Shepherd. We want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come in and share with you what has been a tremendous amount of work on behalf of our community, our parents, our staff, as a part of the Bond Planning Task Force. Before we jump into our presentation, just want to echo the sentiments Dr. Shepherd shared on behalf of our administrative team. Recognizing School Board Appreciation Month, we recognize the tremendous amount of time and energy and effort that you all put into helping us build a culture of continuous improvement. And that's part of what we're here to talk about tonight. And thank you, Mr. Mercer, for sharing those sentiments as well about our task force members, because much like our board members, they are volunteers and they have volunteered a tremendous amount of time to study what is a very complex situation. So we're happy to bring forward the work of that group and the fruits of that labor to you tonight. I'm going to share my screen and start our presentation. And you will be hearing from myself initially. And then we have three outstanding task force representatives who I will introduce shortly. But this is our V I S D Bond Planning Task Force presentation to bring forward recommendations to the superintendent and board of trustees. You may note at the bottom there, we have our hyperlink to our Bond Task Force website, where all of our information, all of the tremendous amount of work that this group has done, can be found for our community and beyond. Our agenda for this information item is to share an overview of the task force, background on the process, key considerations of the task force, culminating in those task force recommendations that members will bring you tonight. And then I'll walk with you through some consideration of next steps moving forward from tonight. Want to start and just take a moment to connect the work that's really been going on in our school district in designing our future for the past three years, and how that work aligns to the work of the task force over the last 16 months. We recognize that we have had involvement from many, many community members, staff, students, parents, as a part of our strategic planning process. And we've actually had the voices of thousands through our thought exchange, through gathering the thoughts and feedbacks of our back of our community. We've worked together to develop strategic planning findings and directions. And I just wanted to take a moment to note the connection between this specific finding that came forward from that three years of work related to facilities. And it noted in the findings, we believe having well-maintained facilities creates pride in our district and honors our commitment to our community. And we committed that therefore we will ensure staff have the resources to efficiently maintain district facilities and to commit to a system of long-range planning. We also had a finding as a part of the facilities that we believe facilities play an integral role to inspire teaching and empower learning. And therefore, directions were to modernize facilities to include flexible learning environments, meeting the diverse learning styles of our students, as well as designing learning spaces, enabling the seamless integration of technology. And so this was a part of the basis of the work of our Bond Planning Task Force. When we talk about the makeup of that task force, as we ended the task force work in terms of coming to consensus around some recommendations for the board's consideration, we ended with 32 members, 21 of those being parents, community members, business members, grandparents, 11 of those being staff members, ranging from teachers to principals to members of our child nutrition and maintenance departments. This has been a 16-month journey. So while there are 32 members, and you'll see their names here shortly, I do want to also honor the work of many others. We had over 40 parents and community members who throughout the course of the 16 months have played a role in providing us with insight during time with our Bond Planning Task Force. And so we are appreciative of all that work. But this group is a representative cross-section of our district, and they did bring varying perspectives from our community to the work. I'm honored and we're blessed to have three of those very committed task force members here with us tonight, who are going to share parts of that Bond Planning Task Force journey. We will start with Pastor Oliver Greer, followed by Dr. Vic Morgan. And then Mandy Lingle will bring forward recommendations from the task force. So as they start, I'm going to ask them to just provide a brief bit of background on who they are and what may have piqued their interest in joining the Bond Planning Task Force. And so I want to invite Pastor Greer to come in and talk to you about the task force overview.
Thank you, Mr. Bondwell, and everyone that can hear me and listen to the situation tonight. It is really, I think, a great thing that we have done. We've come together and we have worked. And I myself, I've only been in Victoria for three years. So and this is my first opportunity to ever even work on a bond raising situation. But in doing this, one of the things that I can say is it takes a lot of commitment. And it's a lot of work. So those two things I can say, I appreciate it because of the people that were that was on this bond working together. Because if you can't be honest when you're working, and if you can't disagree, and if you can't come and find a stable place for us to be where we can go forward, then we wouldn't really be accomplishing anything. But it just so happened that all of the people that were on this bond task force, they were freely speakable, they were truthful, they disagreed. But we would wind up talking for a while and working on it, and we could come to one accord. Hopefully, after y'all have heard everything that we have covered for this span of time, we will see that these things are necessary. We've come together on them, and you have our support. There you're looking at the task force that was doing all of this work that we're talking about, having those 32 people. Most of you, because you're on a board, you know we're working with 32 people. It's hard to come up with a consensus. But believe it or not, we were able to do it in almost everything that we done. And just like for you to know that those are the people who have spent a tremendous amount of time so that we can accomplish what's necessary to continue to bless our children, that they can get the education that they desire, that they need, and they can be proud of the schools that they're going to. I think that's very, very important. The task force was charged with this bond planning thing to utilize a facility study and need assessment to analyze and recommend short, mid, and long-term bond and facility efforts. And we did that. We covered, we looked at what we could do in short terms, what we could do in the midterms, and what we're going to have to back off and put down the road just a little bit further. But we did come to the conclusion, it still needed to be done. And that's one thing I hope the board really take a look at and consider, is that everything that we're going to cover tonight is absolutely necessary. It's just what do we do first, second, and third? So we discussed the broad range of possibilities and actions that could be taken. And we submitted a recommendation to the superintendent and the board. So y'all already have that. And as we even look at just the overview of the situation, when you're looking at the financial overview, you can't get caught up on just that dollar that you have in hand or what you think that you may be able to do. You have to not only look at now, but you got to look down the road. You have to even take the opportunity that is, if it's necessary, to make a step out of what you would call your normal bounds. And I believe we also did that. We looked at while we were going through this, the enrollment projection and the campus capacity studies, the campus tours and photos showed us, was somewhat surprised of the amount of work that needed to be done. We realized if we was going through this, we couldn't do it all at one time. But we also saw the necessity of making sure that we really get started and really get into this. And we came up with ways in which we could do that. The campus tours and the photos showed us just how much we needed to do. The age of our schools are unbelievable. And to keep up, we have to really get into this and follow it up step by step until we get through. The findings that we came up with on this was what was absolutely necessary that we had to get done, as well as, okay, once we get that done, we got to keep continuing to work on what we're doing. So we did follow that up. I'm going to jump a little bit all the way down to the construction cost data. I don't know about y'all because y'all have been in it for a while. But while it seemed excessive to me when we first looked at it. But the problem that we had, just to try to renovate in some of the schools, is going to cost as much almost as it is to build a new school. So that brought up other considerations, whether we should renovate or build new schools. And we did come with a consensus on that, on the direction that we were going to take off and what we would do after that. And I believe y'all have that particular report tied in with it. We even, as it says, a community survey and thought exchange data. We have to sell this, but some of the people, they look at strictly the dollar instead of looking at the children. And what we want to focus on, we have to understand the dollar, but our focus has to be on our children and what we are trying to bless them with and why we are doing it. Because once they go through Victoria Independent School District, they go to the next level. Our job, okay, is to make sure that they have been prepared to do that. And having nice schools and not having all the broken pieces that we seen on the photo shoot, I believe really will help them. And that's something that we wanted to really look at. As we look at the overview of the process, we find out that we did have consensus on this. And it amazes me that you can get 32 people that can disagree on some things, but it seems like on the absolute necessities, they really can come together. And we agreed on some of these things. And that has also been turned in with the report. And at the same time, we have priority repairs. Y'all, as the school board, I am quite sure are familiar with them, the public may not be. The schools in Victoria, most of them are very old. And there has been a lot of changes come up. Even if you just start with the simple things of having enough electricity coming into the building and enough hookups, we have gone from a classroom to a classroom of computers. And we have, we need all of these things. In order to keep these things going, it's a constant. And because this has not happened, we're dealing with it at this particular time. We did prioritize the campus needs in the report as we saw that it needed to be. Tremendous need in almost every one of the schools that we looked at. And as we broke it down, I think you have a list of how we set it up and everything and the options that we have and the buzz scenarios. So we have, the last thing here is to determine the short and mid-range recommendations. And we did do that. We recommended the situations of what should be done at this particular moment. But please, we just want to have the understanding that that's our starting point. We don't quit. We keep working until we get it all. And the task force, I think we should give them a big thank you because they were there every week. They were there, they kept up with it. And all of the work that needed to be done and all of the questions that came up. And although we didn't agree with everything, we worked on it and we could come to an agreement on it. We understand that everything cannot be done at one time. But we still stand that it needs to be done. And that's what I would like to pass on to the school board, is we have a lot of work to do. And we have started it, but it must be completed. And that will be left up to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor Greer. Really appreciate your work there throughout this entire process and joining us tonight as well to share with the board. We are going to transition to Dr. Vic Morgan, who is going to share with you the key considerations and the type of data that the group looked at.
Okay, before I get started, I will simply share with you that I'm 78 years old. And that means about 72 years of my life have been involved with education somewhere along the way. I was married to a woman who talked for 33 years and spent two terms on a school board. We've raised a couple of sons that have gone through public school. And I'm absolutely and totally convinced and believe that public education is where the future of this country, this state, the world lies. And I saw this opportunity to enhance the educational facilities in Victoria as a way to talk about what we can do to improve and move forward with the future. So if you will, we'll go through a few slides here and let me share some thoughts from the task force. We looked at facility assessments and the assessment document actually looked at the conditions of 21 V I S D facilities, 15 of which are campuses more than 15 years old. You can see on the slide the categories that we reviewed, and I won't read all those to you, but I would call your particular attention to the utilization, the T E A, and the capacity. Those and the accessibilities and codes are things that in some instances are beyond our control in the sense that there are things stipulated by T E A and by the accessibility issues that simply have to be addressed. The technology issue, you heard Pastor Greer mention the fact that plugs just don't exist in many classrooms that will get us the electricity that we need and the things we need to get into this aid. The dining and kitchen areas, you'll see in a few of the schools, we said were high priority and a few were medium priority. And we dealt with both the staff and the people who prepare the meals, as we talked about those. And then finally, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing services. And looking at some of the pictures of some plumbing that's been in place for 80 years is kind of scary. If we look at the ages of the facilities assessed, here you have them, the list of the facilities that we looked at. You'll notice that 15 of those campuses have facilities over 50 years old. We did include Memorial Stadium and Patty Welder Stadium, you'll see on the list there. And then we included the maintenance and transportation facilities. Both of those are important maintenance for the future, maintaining the facilities that we believe need to be either renovated or rebuilt. And the transportation, just simply to get the kids there in a safe and effective manner. We did prioritize categories, high priority items. And you'll notice that some of these deal with comfort, such as the H V A C. Some are code requirements, such as accessibility. Some are related to safety and security. Some are related to the kitchen and dining facilities. And those are split, as I mentioned a moment ago, between the high priority and the moderate priority items. And then we, the kitchen facilities, as I mentioned, we did look at the district's maintenance department and the child nutrition department leadership, as we talked about those. The playgrounds at the bottom was an addition that the committee felt was worth adding. It was not anything that was on the priority categories initially. But as we discussed, we felt like that these playground additions address several things. Number one, playgrounds are not accessible. And so accessibility is an issue there. The playgrounds are, among other things, one of the most visible things that happen around our elementary schools. They also provide a community service in the fact that they're usually available to others. And so we felt that the playgrounds needed to be added as a priority item and included in the recommendations. Pathways, you've studied pathways and agreed to these as a school board. These pathways bring V I S D into the 21st century in terms of the needs of the education of our students. Not every student needs the traditional education experience. And these pathways give options for students and parents to make decisions about their futures. Also, the pathway campuses receive particular attention from the task force when considering rebuilding and renovation options because of the innovative programs that they're going to be providing. And so we looked at those very carefully to make sure that we could implement those pathways that you've already chosen and approved, I believe. And so that was taken into consideration by the task force. This slide is really interesting in that it corrects a lot of misinformation that's out in the community. The V I S D tax rates are, the community believes, at least many of the people that you hear from, believe that the tax rates are higher than they've ever been. And if you look at this chart, when you look at the bottom, it starts at 2000 and runs through 2021. And you'll notice that the tax rates have basically gone down almost the entire 20-year period. If you actually extended this back to 1992, it doesn't show on the graph, but today's V I S D tax rate is lower than it has been since 1992. So that's where our tax rates are, and that's a misconception in the community. If you look at tax rates in similar-sized districts, again, we're looking at how the V I S D tax rate compares. It's the one that's highlighted in yellow. And you'll notice that we are on the lower end of the tax rates, both the I N S rate and the total rate for districts our size across the state. You can look at the districts across the bottom and study that to the extent that you need to. Some of these, you'll say, well, they're really rich districts, and some of them are otherwise. But they're all about the same size as we are, and we're on the lower end of the tax rates. If we move on to school districts in the immediate vicinity, again, you'll notice that V I S D is on the, towards the lower end of the tax rates, both I N S and the total rates of these districts, these districts that are in our immediate vicinity. The next slide is, we spent some time with the district's financial advisors. And one of the major takeaways is represented in this graph. And this literally is, shows this is excellent time to issue bonds with interest rates at historic lows. It's an excellent time from the issuer's perspective to issue bonds. The I N S tax rate scenarios, we looked at these. And these were available to us in almost every one of our meetings as we talked about what would happen and what the consequences were. You'll notice that this chart shows for each penny increase, the bond capacity that's generated, as well as what the monthly cost would be to a homeowner in a $100,000 home and a homeowner in a $200,000 home. Mandy Lingle will talk more about the approximate tax effect of our task force recommendations in her remarks in just a few minutes. But let me just say briefly, before we leave this slide on these tax rate scenarios, it's interesting from my perspective, I don't understand why people get so upset about their property tax rates and their school tax rates because they pay less in these taxes than they do in the state sales tax. The difference primarily is, is they pay these school taxes and property taxes once at the end of the year. And I'm sorry that people aren't smart enough to set aside a little bit each month to make those payments. But they don't do that, and so that tax payment comes due. And they're frustrated and bothered because it's gone up over the past year. I don't think I've ever thought much about that because I'm not sure, outside of living in a home provided for me by a university, I've always paid for my homes with the mortgages and the tax amount is built into the monthly payment. I never gave any thought to what the tax rates were. But certainly, people who pay those taxes at the end of the year see that, and they get frustrated about it. And I'll put my soapbox up now, go on to the next slide. I apologize for that, but I just don't understand why people get so upset. Why don't they just set aside a little bit each month and pay their taxes at the end of the year? This survey that was done was a community survey that was completed early in December of 2020. So it's fairly recent. There were 345 random respondents from the community. And initially, they had no information about anything other than would you vote, how would you vote for a bond of $150 million? And you'll see there that 32% are a goodly number, 58% would vote, 51% would vote against the bond of $150 million. After they were given some information about the goals and the directions and what was trying to, what we were trying to accomplish, we came back and asked again, how would you vote? This time, 58% would vote for the bond issue, which is certainly sufficient to pass. I think the results of this survey, if they don't do anything else, they make a unified effort to educate, the importance of making a unified effort to educate the public and the community about the needs that currently exist across our district's aging facilities. So that the public then, the community, can make an informed decision. And that's what the secret, I think, will be to passing any bond that the board chooses to move forward with. That concludes my part of the presentation.
Excellent job, Dr. Morgan. Thank you so much as well. Dr. Morgan was another one of our, every week he was there and always brought wisdom and thoughtfulness to our task force. Our third and final task force representative to present for the board tonight is Mandy Lingle. And Mandy will be presenting the recommendations from the task force along with some of those impacts from the recommendations. So invite Mandy to come forward and share a little bit about yourself and your connection and what brought you to want to do this work, Mandy.
Yes, I'm Mandy Lingle. I actually have only lived here three to four years, just like Pastor Greer. I didn't realize he was that many years as well. I have a kiddo at Deleon, I have a kiddo at Howell. I actually sub in the district. I've actually met President Van Hook's wife while subbing out of school. So I see the kiddos every day, I see the teachers every day, I see the facilities every day. And I just see, when invited to be on this, I was so excited to be able to make such a big impact. I wanted to have a voice for the kiddos and have a voice for the teachers. So thank you for letting me be here tonight to present. So with the task force work over 16 months, analyzing all these various factors that Dr. Morgan and Pastor Greer have showed us, with 15 V I S D campuses over that Dr. Morgan and Pastor Greer have showed us, with 15 V I S D campuses over 50 years old, the task force wants to take advantage of historically low bond interest rates. The task force wants to keep our district in the mid-range tax rate as comparable to similar sized districts. The task force wants to have a huge positive impact on the most campuses possible. So with that being said, the V I S D Bond Planning Task Force recommends the Board of Trustees call for a May 1, 2021 bond election for the following projects. For Strowman Middle School, a rebuild. For Mission Valley Elementary School, a rebuild. High priority repairs district wide on campuses. New playgrounds at all elementary schools, where it's estimated a total number of $156.8 million. So with $156.8 million bond election, it would result in a 7.5 cent INS tax rate increase, which equates to approximately 6.25 cents, $6.25 per month per $100,000 tax home value. So basically, if you are $100,000 homeowner or property or property owner, this amounts to about $75 per year. So this would keep us in the average tax rate for school districts of our comparable size. And with this, you would be positively impacting our school district. You would be honoring the district's commitments to our community. You would be inspiring teachers in our district. You would be empowering these little kiddos every day. And when we decide together, we will stand together. And together, we will move forward into a bright future for our district and our community. Okay, the task force also has mid-range recommendations. And our mid-recommendation mid-range recommendations include a Shields Elementary School rebuild. And the task force recognizes that if and when this bond is passed, there are still 13 campuses that are over 50 years old, still 13. The task force also recognizes that the last bond that was passed in 2007, that was 14 years ago. So if and when this bond passes, it would allow for a Shields rebuild with no further tax implication. So our education is not standing still. So we, as a community, can't stand still. We should never be done changing, growing, and improving here in V I S D and Victoria. So with a 7.5 cent INS tax rate increase in 2021, so if and when this bond is passed, it's estimated that V I S D will have approximately $50 million of additional bond capacity in five years at the same INS tax rate. So when and if this bond passes in 2021, we would have a Strowman rebuild, a Mission Valley Elementary rebuild, high priority repairs across campuses, new playgrounds at the elementaries. And in five years, in 2026, we would also have the capacity to have a Shields rebuild with no further tax impact. So bringing us full circle, the charge of the Bond Planning Task Force was to utilize a facility study and needs assessment, which Dr. Greer and Pastor Morgan, oh, sorry, mixed that one up. Pastor Greer and Dr. Morgan gave us all the details in earlier. And we're supposed to recommend a short and mid-range recommendation to you guys, which I covered right now. We were supposed to discuss a broad range of possible actions, which every week as a Bond Planning Task Force, our 32 members met in large group, would hit an issue and would break out into small group, dive into those details and bring it back to the large group and and get to a point where we could get to a consensus. So we went through this every week. And then our final charge was to submit a recommendation to you guys. And that's why we're here tonight, and we want to thank you very much for this opportunity. It was amazing. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to be on the task force, also for the opportunity to present. I am very passionate about the schools here and the kiddos and the teachers. And we're all in this together, and we all want to make a positive impact in our communities, for our teachers, our kids, and our future. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much, Mandy. As you can see, board members, Dr. Shepherd, Dr. Morgan, Pastor Greer, Ms. Lingel, are outstanding task force members, very committed. And I will say they are a reflection of that entire group. And you heard tonight conversation and description of open and honest dialogue and willingness to share and be transparent and willingness to listen to others and come to consensus. And it was really powerful to go through that process and see this number of community members work on a very complex issue and and come to consensus. And I want to just add a little more detail on what that meant. You've heard these recommendations, and these recommendations are only able to be here tonight in front of the board and the superintendent because this 32-member task force came to consensus. And when we started 16 months ago, the task force defined what do we want consensus to mean to us? That could mean a lot of things to a lot of people. And our task force set a very high bar, higher than most school district task forces set. In order for any recommendation to come forward from this Bond Planning Task Force of 32, you could not have more than four people on the other side of the decision. Oftentimes, task forces may set a two-thirds or a three-fourths margin. This number, this bar that this task force set was closer to the 90 percentile of support in order for a recommendation to come forward. And so I think it's important for the board and the community to know the level that this task force helped them to in order for a recommendation to come forward from the group. Now, I want to take just a moment to walk the board and Dr. Shepherd through the consideration of some potential next steps now that we do have recommendations from our Bond Planning Task Force. First, we want to make sure that we spread the word on the work of the task force wide and far, including the work that's been done, the information that's been considered, and that we hear thoughts and feedback from our broader community. We are in the process of compiling a video to share out information about the Bond Planning Task Force and a thought exchange associated with that video to gather additional community thoughts and feedback. So if the board after tonight wishes for us to continue forward with with the work and continue conversation around a potential bond election, this would be one of our next steps that we would intend to take very quickly. I also would want to share with everyone that we are appreciative of the media here locally helping us to spread the word for the past 16 months. The Bond Planning Task Force started work in September of 2019. Over the course of that time, we've had wonderful cooperation in helping us spread the word. You see there at the top, Victoria Advocate has run seven stories specific to the Bond Planning Task Force work. K A V U has run six stories, Town Square Media one, a total 15 media stories specifically focused on on planning task force work. So we're extremely appreciative of their help and spreading the word through our community. You can see some pictures there of some of of some of that work. Also want to reiterate what you've probably heard many times before, and you're going to hear many times in the future, and that is that V I S D is committed to radical transparency. And we are even more committed to unmatched levels of accessibility. I I would challenge us to find any school district that has everything about the work that's been done in bond planning with their community group to have as much information available to our entire community, the entire world. Everything is here for anyone who has an interest in understanding the information that's been covered by our Bond Planning Task Force over the last year and a half to hear the rationale, those rich conversations and discussion. It's all available to anyone who's interested in investing the time to know more about the facts and work that's happening. You can see there on the top right, highlighted and yellow is that website link that will take you to not only what you see on the left-hand side of the page there, which is all of the presentations, all of the material, all of the facility assessments. And then on the right-hand side, we have our own YouTube channel. Thank you, Ashley Scott. We appreciate that. It's amazing. And you can see the videos of this task force, and you can hear the conversation, and you can see the presentations for yourself. And we invite and encourage everyone to do that so that as we move forward, we can make decisions as a community. We also want to just briefly cover some key dates. Should the board want to move forward with this conversation beyond tonight? We have secured next week, Tuesday, January 26 as a date for a potential bond workshop to discuss this recommendation and greater detail with the board. We have also secured our bond council, our financial advisors, the architects who've served as a part of the facility assessment, and our administrative team will all be available to the board should you wish to workshop next Tuesday. Another important date of note is the February 12 deadline. That's state imposed deadline. You have to call for a May 1 bond election 78 days prior that. So the cutoff date for any school board in the state of Texas to call upon for May 1 is on February 12. We've also earmarked just prior to February 12, February 9 as a potential date for a special meeting to consider the call of an election should the board wish to go forward with considering action on an election. You can see those other dates culminating down there with Election Day, which happens to be on Saturday, May the 1st for 2021. Again, just want to reiterate my thanks to our task force representatives and to the board for your willingness to allow us to do this type of work. It's been very rewarding for our administrative team. I think we've learned a lot together. And at this time, I'd like to say thank you to the board and open it up to any questions or thoughts that you might like to share.
I'm unmuted at this time. I I've asked the mic person to watch those hands for us, and we we can go with those hands. The board members want to ask questions at this time.
Mr. Mansker.
I want to thank the task force, Mr. Greer, Ms. Lingel, and Dr. Morgan. I think y'all have done exceptional work. I've observed some of the meetings, and y'all have done an incredible job of trying to get this together. We, as a board, understand that the school district has distinct facility needs, especially in with the new technology we're trying to bring to the school district with the PTEC program and other programs that we're trying to encourage. I wish there could be more, but I think this is a pretty good middle-of-the-road type proposal. I was taken aback by the escalation from costs from the previous bond to this one. I was shocked that the rebuilds were so high. But I I guess that is the cost of construction is going up. I appreciate everybody's time and consideration because y'all y'all have done yeoman's work in trying to get this done. And so I think, in my opinion, that we could possibly move forward and consider this maybe on February 9. The COVID situation also, I know, was was a consideration for the task force. And if you had 87.5% consensus, that's pretty good consensus for a task force. I appreciate that, and I appreciate y'all's time and effort. And we know the school system is in dire needs for repairs and replacement, but thank you very much.
Mrs. Pruitt.
I also want to say thank you so much to the three of you that have come up today to speak with us about this. Pastor Greer, your your words really stuck with me about people need to look past money and look at their heart in the success of their students for our for their students. I thought that was that that stuck with me. You said it at one of the meetings at the very, very beginning, and it's just stuck with me throughout throughout this process. Dr. Morgan, thank you so much for kind of talking a little bit about the tax rate and that kind of stuff. Greatly appreciated. Thank you so much for being on on there. And I know you've got a lot of experience with the education system. And and that knowledge, I think, showed in a lot of the discussions that you had. And Ms. Lingel, I I think it's great that you said, you know, we need to grow. I see that, you know, with everything else is growing, our school district also needs to grow. Some of the people that are not here that I heard a lot of discussion from were Dr. Kano and Bethany and Justin Urbano. A lot of what Justin and Bethany talked about was the South Side. So I'm very excited to see that Strowman is on there as a suggestion. What I find interesting is I went to Thought Exchange, and Mission Valley actually said they love their open opened, their little open school. They say, we're in the country. We like this, you know, we're used to walking in the in the in the rain and that kind of stuff. We thought that was kind of cute. That's a very special school. I taught there a while back when I first came to Victoria. So it's a really special school. I like to see it that it's on there as well. All children are deserving of the of a facility that's new and that they can learn on and be successful with. So I'm glad that these are on there and to see that in the high priorities, I think, that you guys discussed in your meetings. I know there was a couple of other scenarios that y'all talked about Patty Welder in Shields or Strowman in Shields or Strowman and Smith. So I know y'all had a lot of discussion over those things. And so I think this this recommendation is really great, and I can stand behind it. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised at this time, but I will put my two cents in. Here's what I like about this. I like the process. I like the fact that we put it in the community's hands. I like the fact that we have a a task force that is is over two-thirds of the community members that are connected. I like the fact that, as I watched those many, many hours of of task force meetings, that in the small group discussion, how in-depth they got, it left me wanting more through that process of exactly what everybody wanted. And I wish there was some way that we could capture every single small group in that time because I found myself, even though we're talking close to 40 hours worth of video, I found myself being drawn in and listening to what the community wanted and what was important to the community and everything else. So I I really loved the process as it went. Now, what really interests me in this was the the awareness of our community that we don't just need to deal with what is today. We also need to deal with what's tomorrow and the day after that. So the mid-range planning, I thought, was was genius. I I I love the fact that, you know, it's one of the things I spoke about before is 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 bonds aren't a bad thing. But we just need to make sure that every time that we that we go out for one, that we're thinking beyond today, we're thinking about tomorrow and the next day. So kudos to the task force for doing that. Kudos to Dr. Bonewald for facilitating that discussion. I do echo what Mr. Mansker said earlier. I mean, it is COVID. People are a little unsure about what the future holds. But at this point, based on what I've heard, based on the work that went in, and in no way, shape, or form, do I want to diminish anything that this task force has done because it has been it has been incredible. I really, I really want to hear more. I'm at that point. I would love to see us move on at least to the 26th and and hear even even more drilled down in-depth information. Mr. Baldwin.
Didn't want to catch myself on mute there. So thank you so, so much, the task force. I really appreciate. Let me start with Dr. Bonewald. Dr. Bonewald, I know that this started way back even further when you were starting to put together the different task force. So hats off to you. That's a lot of work, and I know you've learned a lot in this process. But I just really wanted to say thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all the the spokespersons, and I agree with my colleagues that there's a lot more people behind it, people that are on the streets talking to us about it and letting us know. And so I definitely think we put a lot of time into it and a lot of effort. And so I just don't want that to not go unrecognized and, most importantly, appreciated because it is volunteer and it's it takes a lot. Having said that, I I have questions, surprise, surprise, but.
surprise. But I will say that I, I agree that we all want the best for our students. We want the best for our community. Some people's best may have come from different experiences that they've had. You mentioned, Ms. Lingle, that you've come from a different location. So you bring something as an outside perspective to maybe some of us that have had not that perspective and have lived in Victoria most of our lives. So that's a great thing. And I believe Pastor Greer is as well. You mentioned three years. So we all have different perspectives on what success looks like. We all have expectations of where we want to go in the future. But for me, the big question is, how do we get there? How do we get there? What is there? What? And it may sound a little bit repetitive, but I've asked questions about what do we want to look like? What is the vision that we have? And that's up to the board to produce and make it so crystal clear that people can begin to see and understand why bond is necessary to help us deliver on that vision. There's a lot of people that do look at the dollars. There's a lot of people that, you know, really understand the value for the children. But some people look at it as an investment. And if we are not taking care of our, use the home, eventually it begins to dilapidate. And so you have to upgrade. You have to bring things to code and so forth. And so how do we get there and what is there, you know, defined as? And then what are the expected outcomes? You know, what is we, all this money we're spending, what do we hope to achieve? We want better than we are. We want continuous improvement. So I'm going to stop right there for a second and let people chew on that just a little bit. And then I'll come back with some questions on some specific slides that I may have, but I want to make sure I give time to my other colleagues. Thank you.
Dr. De La Santos.
I too want to say thank you to the task force and for the many hours of work that y'all did on this humongous project. And we've had facility reports in the past and they're saying basically the same thing. Our buildings are getting old. Even after the recommendation is passed, as Mindy said, Mandy said, we're still going to have 13 buildings that are over 50 years, 50 years old. So something needs to be done. We can't kick the can down the road any longer. So thank you for all your work and I look forward to working on this project and doing what's best for BISD. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Keeling. Madam Vice President, excuse me, Madam Vice President.
Hopefully I'm not frozen. What's going on here?
You're good.
Okay, it looks frozen on the screen. Well, I too want to say thank you to the task force, also to Pastor Greer, Dr. Morgan, and Ms. Lingle for joining us tonight and representing the task force members. You know, when I think about the task force and it seems to me that there's more than 1,000 man-hours just in facilities planning, bond planning task force. That doesn't include all the many hours preceding that with the entire community talking about the direction of the type of learning we want in VISD and strategic planning and many, many more hours as well. So thank you to the bond planning task force. We're very grateful for your work and to all of the others who've served on task forces to date because none of this happens in isolation. While these are complex things, they are all also interconnected in my mind. And I really believe that designing our future together defines Victoria and and VISD. It's, in my mind, is a fulfillment of a promise that I know in 2017 that we told the community that they were going to have a role to play in the decision-making process in VISD and when it came to VISD facilities. And so this is very much a discussion together and specifically now about a bond proposal. And it's a community recommendation. And it's going to be a community decision. I think, Ms. Lingle, you said something about when we all decide together and we come to consensus together, we're going to stand together. I've watched a lot of the bond planning task force as well as the tours of our facilities that are on YouTube, the conversations around that, hours and hours of meetings, as well as participating in strategic planning. And now I think it's time to take the next step. I want to listen to the broader community and hear what they have to say because this is going to be an all of us together, as you said, Ms. Lingle. And I'm very interested in taking the next step and hearing the feedback from the broader community. You know, while we're here, speaking of the community, I'd like to take the opportunity to the three presenters, and I know they're in our file, but because this is of high community interest, and I hope the public is taking the opportunity to tune in tonight or will watch at some point in the future, and certainly encourage them to participate in, if we move forward, the thought exchange and let us hear from them. So I'd like to take this opportunity to correct a couple of misunderstandings that I've already heard in the community. So if any of you of the task force or Dr. Bonewald want to jump out, I'm just going to let you fill in the blank. Number one, misunderstanding. The bond wants to spend $19 million on playgrounds. That number is actually?
It's only 1.5 million.
Thank you. 1.5 million. Also, that the cost of the bond, proposed bond would be $30 a month to a someone living in a home that appraised at $100,000. That actual cost, proposed cost per month would be?
$6.25.
Thank you. We get, when we start community conversations, we end up with with a lot of misunderstandings as we start these. And so while we're all here in public, I wanted to correct those just so we didn't have those particular misunderstandings any longer. You know, tonight, as we share our perspectives as trustees, it's a pulse on the board. And how do we feel at this point in time now, having received the recommendation? And I very much want to continue that open and honest conversation and to discuss where we go from here as a community. It's important to me in this proposal that you've addressed and identified the critical needs. As Dr. De La Santos said, we've had facility studies before. We're all aware of the critical needs in our district. They are not improving. And so that's one. So I'm very pleased to see that. And I'm also pleased to see that your proposal connects to and supports the strategic plan and the findings and directions in the strategic plan, not just on the facilities piece, but on the pathways piece that was also a slide. And I feel like when we can can demonstrate that what we're after are those unique opportunities for each child to get their end and to guarantee every child a successful launch in VISD, we're going to figure out what the proper way for us to do that is as a community. So I'm all for moving forward with, I don't have any other questions tonight, but I'm for taking the next step and getting further community feedback and meeting on the 26th. And thank you again for your work.
Well, so said, Ms. Tammy, again, I also want to thank Pastor Greer, Dr. Morgan, and Ms. Lingle for your presentations was fabulous. I thank you so much for the entire team of 32 on the task force that helped move forward and all the work and diligent work that was involved. And I know the guidance there with Dr. Bonewald. Thank you so much for the hard work that you placed in there because I sure should, I sure appreciate everything that you've done in reference to that. Tammy said something, of course, that that I want to piggyback. And when we're talking about designing our future together, we made some promises. And of course, we do want the community's involvement. Also, a statement was made by probably Pastor Greer and both Dr. Morgan about how we are continuing to be radically transparent, how we want people to see our movement, our direction, where we want to go. We want our community to be involved. And I need to state that very clearly. And and I'm so glad that those questions that were have been out, Ms. Keeling has addressed that I've heard in the community, but also want to state where are we going? You know, I can see where we're going. I can see, of course, the progress that we've already made. I can see that we're going to improve the environment for our children to learn in. I can see the success that we've already had can improve even more with better facilities. And so that's where we're going. And I can see that as a board member. I also see the learning improving and I can also see our pathway piece that's involved and we can continue to move forward in that direction. I see also the direction our administration is going in the way of our student achievement, and that is changing tremendously. And I can imagine, I can't imagine how much it would change even more with better facilities, a better place for children to learn. And so I will be certainly looking forward to giving more information out to the community and moving forward with this proposal that has been given to us by this task force, and I will be supporting it.
Mr. Baldwin.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Bonewald, would you be kind enough to pull up the presentation for me?
Yes, sir.
And board members, I just want to bring up to your attention some of the things that are put into this presentation and not as a criticism, but more as a thought, as we pretend to begin to think about how we present this to the community because it's rightfully so. This is the community's decision to make on the bond or not. I believe it's slide three. I'll start there. It starts with the strategic planning.
Sorry, I'll get, I'll get there shortly, sir.
Yeah, no problem. Take your time. And I just want a few things that may come up in the in the presentations, but if you notice, we have some great strategic plan opportunities, but there are some words and I just challenge us to really think through these words. And what I mean by that is modernized learning environments, long-range planning. There may need to be a little bit more meat on some of these items. And when I say that, that so that there's no ambiguity, that we know that this bond is going to address some of those issues that may be somebody else's way of defining it. And again, I stress that we make that as clear and evident as possible. If you could go to that tax rate graph that was showing, and I didn't see the, yes, sir, that one. People may begin to ask questions. Well, okay, in 2008, why all of a sudden from 2007 did it drop? What caused that drop? Was it decisions made by the board or was it state mandated? And I can just say on 2019, it looks like it dropped also from 2019, 2020. And we need to keep in mind the compression rates that we are mandated. And so that's something that people may get a little bit confused with. And then I would like for you to go to the slide about the comparisons of the different districts. You've all heard me talk about similar sizes and I understand the validity of that, but I also want us to always compare to top-performing districts, districts and what they're paying. It may be a much higher and we may find out it's lower and there could be some best practices on seeing who's actually doing well on their performances and achievements throughout the state, who are getting recognized. And although I agree that there's some sizes and we need to know kind of what's going on with the community or other districts around us, I would also ask us to think about districts that are similar in economic development, types of industries, their tax-based similarities. And one that jumps out there that I'll commend you on is Brazosport ISD with a lot of petrochemical plants in the vicinity. So those are going to be some of the questions that I anticipate the public asking. What I'm drawing you to is, again, I think everything we would like to do this bond yesterday because we know we need the funds and we know we have some maintenance issues. So don't get me wrong. I know that this could be, we wanted it done yesterday. But one of the things that I fear in this COVID environment, in a new administration that's coming into office, in the situation of experiences I've had with other campaigns, we have a very, very tight window. And we, if we're going to do this bond and we're going to get acceptability and the voters to approve it, we have to have understanding. And when you have limited opportunities to have folks come in and listen in town hall type of structures, it's very, very important. And as we heard from Ms. Keeling, there's already some misinformation out there. So there's going to be some times that we're going to have to put to looking at how to defunct some of that misinformation and address it if it is indeed correct. And that takes time. And as I'm, if I did my math, Dr. Bonewald, right, we've got exactly 100 days before the election. And of course, we have to make a decision, but that that decision is still a little bit fuzzy for me. I think what I heard was 156. And so that needs to be very, very clear on the amount so that we're not being confused. We, and for me, finally, the tax rates are good, but I also want administrative management involvement. I appreciate, I think there's been some very in-depth studies by architecture. I think we have legal and I know that we've talked about having those folks present. But I think where we need to really focus on is how we're going to get things accomplished, how we're going to talk about this and the plan very in-depth, and more importantly, what the impact and the results that we think will happen as a result that the voters were to pass this. So let me conclude with my comments on the slide and then I'll have one final comment. If you'll go back to the survey one. Yes, sir. As a marketing person, I'm always concerned when I see surveys done, particularly when they don't always have, let's say, good information upfront. And so that's, it's already initiated here. Initially, we had a no of 51%. So it's very vital that we make sure it's very clear on what we're getting information on. If you take from that slide another perspective, maybe it's the half, the glass half-empty as opposed to half-full. I look at 32% strongly and I put into category of 27 somewhat in favor, added with depends and unsure of four and then against the total against of 38%. Now we have a majority that's not necessarily in favor of it, and that would concern me. And that would concern me to the point that we need to tell the story of the need and the impact very clearly in order for that to be a higher percentage of strongly, because you're still going to have to be convincing the voters in the end. And so with that, I would like to speak to the transparency. I don't want to go tonight so much in depth unless our board would like to, for me to ask these questions, but I counted up, I've got about 17 questions that I would like to have answered. And frankly, I'd like to put them into as transparency as possible. And I'd love to put them on our website as a board and maybe other board members would want to follow. But I think this is some questions that I've had from the community. I've had questions myself. And then just after listening to the presentation, it's raised a few more questions. And with that, as always, I have a suggestion. You put, thank you so much for putting the people's names that were there so they can be gratefully appreciated and recognized. But I personally don't know everybody on that. And so if I had an opportunity as my constituents, even though we represent as a board the whole community, people sometimes don't always come up to me, but they may be more comfortable coming to some of the task force members. And if they at least put the district where they are residing, that may help out with some of the discommunication that's needed. So again, those are my comments in general. I think if we move forward, we got to be very diligent in how we present this and the discussions. And I'd be all for a discussion on the 26th. But if we can't get to 26 and having some of those questions answered and really look at this with the short timeframe that we have, I don't think it's the best time to move forward. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Madam Vice President. I think you're on mute.
All the time, every time. I think these opportunities, we have discussions with the community at the board table and amongst our discussions with the community at the board table and amongst ourselves. It's just so important as Pastor Greer said, that, that we continue to be open and, and honest and, and learning together. And so I think, Mr. Baldwin, there's an opportunity here on, particularly in one place. And I, I'm going to make sure, Dr. Shepherd, maybe Mr. Mansker, that, that I'm on the right path. So correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to circle back to that. So hang on a minute. But I think that we're all going to have questions when it comes to a little more in-depth. The question before us tonight is, do we want to hear more from our community on how they feel about this proposal from the task force? I know there are going to be lots of questions and we're going to dig deeper if we go further. The question right now is just, do we want to hear from the broader community about how they feel? Because we're going to make this decision altogether. So I, I'd like for all the board members to kind of keep that in perspective. Tonight's just a pulse and I don't need to go any further in-depth myself. I would like to talk a little bit about the specific question on, just because it's incredibly confusing about the tax rate. In the spirit of being open and learning together, Mr. Baldwin, you, you asked whether or not some of that in the later years was due to compression and what some of the dips in the INS rate were as well. And so I think that it's very important to understand, this is where I want correction, if I'm wrong, that the history of the way the board and past boards have managed the finances of the district have put us in a very favorable position vis a vis the INS rate. We have a strong bond rating, but also compression does not affect the interest in sinking rate. Compression does affect the, the overall tax rate because it affects the MNO rate. So jump in there, somebody, if I'm wrong. But these, these become very quickly tough, tough deals, right? To, and hats off to the task force who, I know his, from several members of the task force have gotten a crash course in bonds and tax rates and finance. And it's a lot. So Ms. Mansker, Dr. Shepherd, do you? Is that a, is that a question you can jump in and on compression?
Actually, the next hand up is, is Mr. Mansker.
Okay.
Let me give the floor. I'd like to come back to me, but let's give the floor to Dr. Shepherd and let him discuss the, Tammy's questions first, if you don't mind.
Sure. Tammy, as I heard you describe it, that's an accurate representation.
Yeah. And as far as I'm concerned, I appreciate Mr. Baldwin's comments. I think tonight is, not that we're approving it or we're going to support it or whatever. It is more to the point that we're going to listen again because we know the need is there. And I think his 17 questions, I think that if we choose to move forward would be on January 26th that we would come up with those questions. Because we really need to drill into it to make sure we're doing a good job, making sure that this does align with the goals and, and the vision of, of the district. You know, we all know that we need repairs, maintenance, new buildings. We know that and that's nothing new. And that's the reason I really want to move forward with it. On the other side of things, yes, the state has compressed tax rates in the past. And but as Tammy is correct, they do not compress the INS tax rate. And we have used the, any excess in the past to defeat bonds in the past to try to get some of that bond debt down for the district. So I think that that's a, you know, it's, it's just part of trying to fiscally manage the district. There are people who disagree with that and I think that's, that's fine. But I think we just need to have a real good discussion on the 26th and visit and find out what's going on. It also gives the community time, not a lot, but some time to visit with us. And I realize it's 100 days and it's, it's a, this is a much less aggressive approach than the one in 2017 or the one prior to that. This, but like I said, I was taken aback by the escalating cost of things. So I'm thinking in five years, no telling what it would cost, but it's getting more and more expensive. I think we need to keep that in mind too. The longer we wait, the more expensive we, it is. And you are correct with COVID and the way businesses are, we do have a problem, Mr. Baldwin. Because there's not a unlimited supply of cash out there and we got to be very careful that we don't overburden the taxpayer. And I'll, I will, you know, just go on mute and listen to everybody else.
Pastor President Van Hook.
Yes, I will say to the, Mr. Baldwin, thank you so much for the information you shared with us and making us take another look at some things, but I also want to let you know that all questions we want to answer, all questions we want to hear, not only from the board, but from the community as we move forward. And, and that would be my desire. As Ross said and stated, we all realize that we need facilities. We need improvement of our facilities. But yes, we want to be transparent. We want, we want to hear from the community, their concerns as well as the concerns that our board members have. And thank you for those questions and certainly by the 26th, we'll sit down and try to, try to listen to those questions and as well as come together. My desire is that we all be on one accord.
I'll jump in before I go back to you, Mr. Baldwin. I, I think at this point in time, what we're looking for is, is, and, and even from you, Mr. Baldwin, is do we want to move forward to that January 26th date where you can ask those 17 questions or we can get drilled down? I, I think I've expressed my opinion. I, I'm eager to move forward to at least the next step. We're not approving anything tonight. We're just deciding whether we want to, to hear more, whether we want to drill down more. With that being said, Mr. Baldwin.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think we have to go to the 26th. I don't think we can move to the February timeframe without having that opportunity. So I'm in favor to move to the 26th. And if I could just quickly address two other aspects. First of all, Dr. Morgan, thank you so much. I know that you've had experience with previous bond and you know, have a, a lot of wisdom there and, and I didn't get a chance to acknowledge that. So thank you for, for serving and bringing that wisdom. And meantime, Dr. Bonwall, if you don't mind, putting that tax rate back up one more time. The reason I bring it back up is, and I don't want to go into it tonight because it's not appropriate, but I, I just wanted, I think it, I want to make sure I was right. I thought it said total tax rate. And that's one reason why the dip. Yeah, total tax rate. So point well taken on the INS and I agree with that. And I do have some other comments for the 26th with regards to INS. But I just want to make sure that that's, that's seen as total tax rate. And I think that's because of the compression that was for the MNS.
That's correct.
MNO, sorry.
It's correct. It's the total tax rate, but the drop is as a result of the compression of the MNO tax rate.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. No further questions.
And one more question. What, what was the date of Dr. Bonwall that we had to move forward as a board to decide that we would have a bond?
The, the deadline for a May election is February the 12th, which is on a Friday, Friday, February 12th.
If I could add just a final comment before we move on to the next, the next item. Thank you all for the robust discussion. So as I, as I told you previous, if I got a go-ahead from the board tonight, I'll be sending you more information tomorrow in preparation for the meeting on Tuesday. Trustee Baldwin, if you're comfortable sending those questions along to me prior to the meeting so that I can prepare on Tuesday, I would greatly appreciate it. If you'd rather wait, certainly that's your purview. And then I think a challenge, a challenge goal for the community, if you're still hanging with us after 90 minutes or so. I, I've, I've heard that there are people who've tried to binge-watch the entire four seasons of Netflix's The Crown, which as I understand, it takes about 30 hours to do from start to finish. I may even know people who've tried to do that. I challenge our community to binge-watch the YouTube videos of the task force. It's every bit as riveting. It's every bit as suspenseful and I think they've done just a masterful job. So certainly I say this in jest, but, but it's an impassioned plea to our community to please become actively involved in the next couple of weeks. We're all looking forward to hearing your voice.
I'd like to know if there's a director's cut to those YouTube videos.
Mike was being joking. Okay.
Of course. Our pastor president, there seems to be.
No other hands?
Sorry.
Are there any other hands?
There are not.
Are there any other hands, Mike? Okay.
No, sir.